All right, testing, testing. Podium mic check one, two, three. Podium mic test one, two, three. Manager mic test one, two, three. Manager mic testing one, two, three. County clerk testing one, two, three. County clerk mic testing one, two, three. Attorney mic testing one, two, three. Mic check testing one, two, three. Lopez mic testing one, two, three. Check, check, Lopez mic one, two, three. Dennis mic checking test one, two, three. Dennis mic testing one, two, three. Meitzner mic testing one, two, three. Meitzner mic checking one, two, three.
Let me make sure this doesn't work. Just kidding, just kidding.
Always gotta double check anything.
Howell mic testing one, two, three. Howell mic checking one, two, three. Beatty mic check one, two, three. Beatty mic testing one, two, three.
See, I had to cook.
All right, can everyone hear me? We're gonna be starting in about one minute. Everybody stand by. All right, 30 seconds, stand by. 15 seconds.
Okay, we're close, we're close. Comms department, you ready?
To go, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.
Those in the audience and those watching on KPTS and our YouTube and Facebook channels. It's a new year, 2024. With that, we will call the meeting to order of the Sedgwick County Border Commissions for the Wednesday, January 3rd. Madam Clerk.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole. Happy New Year to you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is again providing several drop-off sites for Christmas tree recycling. After you have enjoyed your real Christmas tree this holiday season, take it to one of the many locations around Sedgwick County from now until January 22nd to be converted to mulch. One reminder is to make sure and take off your lights and ornaments because we can't mulch your tree if it's on there. Unfortunately, that does happen.
Great advice.
2023 has been quite the year here in Sedgwick County. For today's good news, we've put in so much effort and accomplished so many remarkable things that we wanted to take a moment to reflect on the past year with this quick recap. Thank you for that opportunity. Here's to 2024, a year full of excitement, hard work, exceptional public service, and continued opportunities for success. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Nicole, thanks for putting that together. That's a great recap of some of the stuff we've done in 2023.
Just wanna say, that was awesome. Thank you. Great reminder and actually pretty cool music as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So that will be available for us to share with our constituents or posted on our website?
Yes, sir. We will have it on our social platforms and our website.
Okay. Thank you and the team for putting that together. All right. Any other questions? I don't see any. Appreciate it. Okay. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't think we had anybody sign up for public agenda today. No. Okay, getting the no sign. All right. So there's no public agenda. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring law enforcement appreciation day.
I've asked Commissioner Dennis to, if he wants to read the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. As a member of the Crime Commission, I know most of us are, but I sincerely appreciate them requesting this proclamation today. And it's proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas the health and safety of the citizens of Sedgwick County, Kansas is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our county's families and community. And whereas Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office is a diverse, modern, and multifaceted law enforcement agency sworn to protect and serve the Sedgwick County community through compassionate, respectful, and professional policing in which people come first. And whereas every day, the men and women of Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office rise to the distinct challenge, often foregoing time off to serve all who live, work, and play in our vibrant county. And whereas law enforcement is a noble, challenging, and extraordinary profession, the men and women of Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office are mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, friends, and comrades who desire to serve others and comes as a sacrifice, sometime impacting their well-being and that of their families. And whereas Sedgwick County government appreciates the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by officers and their family members daily to protect our schools, workplaces, roadways, and homes. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 9th, 2024 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in Sedgwick County and call on all residents, including our youth, to thank our officers for protecting and serving our community. Chairman and Commissioners, everyone has heard the proclamation, move to approve.
A second. Motion, a second. Oh wait. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And this is being accepted today by Steve Coleman, Comeya. He's the president of the Wichita Metro Crime Commission, and we also have Sharon Van Horn in the audience today, and she's the one that actually talked to me on this proclamation today. Thank you.
Thank you, and on behalf of the Wichita Metro Crime Commission, thank you for the proclamation. Our law enforcement people are some of the best you'll ever meet, and again, they have families just like we have families. When you get a chance and you see somebody in uniform, go up and thank them, because they're putting their life on the line every day for every one of us. Thank you.
Hold on just a minute, I think there's a comment or a question. Commissioner Beatty?
I just wanna say, we live in a time where law enforcement in particular gets a lot of attention. There's a lot of conversation about law enforcement and a lot of, sometimes most of that attention that receives public attention many times is negative. So anytime we get the opportunity to declare a proclamation or to let law enforcement officials know that we appreciate what they do, I think we need to take that opportunity. We have incredible public safety, people that work in this community, our sheriff's office EMS, fire, 911. All of these first responders do a significant job in the quality of life of this community. When people wanna stay here and people wanna move here, it's not just because we have great entertainment or arts and park, it's because we have safe community. We have a healthy community, and all law enforcement officers do a good job in making sure that we have exactly that. So thank you today for being here and all that you do with the Crime Commission to elevate what our law enforcement does here locally, and anytime we get a chance to celebrate it, I'll be first in line. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, thank you Sharon and Steve for bringing this to us today. We appreciate it very much because it gives us an opportunity to formally tell how much we appreciate our law enforcement men and women that are serving our community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. One of my favorite pictures that I have when I was just born was my father standing there with a new baby in his police uniform, and so that's how I was raised, and so I appreciate them very much. Thank you very much for everything that you do. I appreciate you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today. I had the opportunity to ride along with our Sheriff's Department once and our DA one person one time as well, and just seeing what our law enforcement goes through, and they told me on the days that I rode along, it was like a very boring day, which always seems to happen, so I guess that's fine. But just kind of seeing what, what everybody goes through and what they put themselves through every day just to keep us safe is pretty amazing, and I just, you know, I'm very grateful that we have people willing to do that in this community and that they're willing to keep, not just for their own families safe, but all of us and our families as well. So they're just very important, and so I'm glad that we can appreciate everybody today. I'm very glad that you guys are here today to help celebrate our law enforcement, but I just appreciate you coming.
Okay. And Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, just to say that as an elected official, number one priority always is public safety, and this is an enormous part of what Sedgwick County does, and we have wonderful officers who stepped up the sacrifice and have, they're highly skilled and they're wonderful people, and they love this community. They love this community. So I just wanna say that it's very fitting that we take one day of the year to celebrate and appreciate and reach out and say thank you to these officers. They deserve it and a whole lot more, but thank you for your role in the Crime Commission and for bringing the, getting the world of law enforcement together. Our community is much better off because of what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
And Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, one last thought, sorry. I mentioned a lot of the public safety folks, and I did not mention our courthouse police that are here, and these guys are wonderful. This entire crew is wonderful, and they're here and they do a lot of work, and so as I listed the litany of those that do public safety here, and we're talking about law enforcement, we have law enforcement people studying in this room today, and I just wanna make sure they know how much they're appreciated as well.
I'll just echo all the comments. Compliments to you all, to both of you, Sharon and Steve. You guys have put your heart and soul in it. I don't think either one of you have a police or law enforcement background, but it's impressive to go to the Crime Commission luncheons, the monthly meetings, and I've always observed that everybody, maybe a lot of people think that it's just a bunch of law enforcement or cops, but there are some of those there, and there are a few retirees there, but there's a large cross-section of the business community and individuals that belong to the organization, which means they care a lot about our law enforcement, they care about the Crime Commission and what you do, and it's not anything that I've just, I've noticed it recently, but you've had this going on for quite a while, back when you, with the first turn in a tips program or whatever it was, and, and so anyway, it's got a long history, and I'm so glad to see the, the business community and citizens that, that are not law enforcement, that are obligated and committed to your, to your mission. So can't thank you enough. Congratulations on that, and... Is there any other comments? Can we give a small cheer? Oh, can you, yep, come right up here, please. Thanks again, Sharon and Steve. Make sure you paid for your parking. We don't want you to get a ticket. Crime, okay. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Bill Hammers from the Sedgwick County Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner, good morning.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Council. This item would just accept the resignation of Bill Hammers from Commissioner Lopez's District Two Citizen Advisory Board. The recommended action is to accept that resignation.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I want to thank Bill for his time served on this. He's been on it since this board was formed. Um, needing to step off just for some personal issues. But, um, I'm looking for someone to fill this that had, that is agriculture. He has a farm out in Clearwater. And so I think having that voice is really important on this advisory board. So if anybody is interested in serving, or if you guys know anybody's interested in serving, that should be open in the next couple of days to apply. But, um, just want to again thank Bill for all the work that he's put into this and driving to Hayesville every month, um, from Clearwater. So I appreciate it and I will move that we accept his resignation.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being done. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Rebecca Tang to the Sedgwick County Fifth District Citizen Advisory Board.
Yes. Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This resolution would appoint Rebecca Tang to Commissioner Howell's Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board. Uh, the rec- resolution is in order and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution, appointing her.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take just a point of privilege just for a moment and to recognize John Nicholas in the audience. He's our, uh, Vice Chair of the Citizen Advisory Board for District Five. He's been on this board since the beginning of District Five, uh, CAB V, I should say. And he's now Vice Chair. And I wanted to say thank you for him to be here. He's actually never missed one of these, which I think is interesting. Every appointment we've ever made, he's attended in person. So thank you, John. Um, Rebecca Tang, and I'm going to just say this, we had an opening, uh, we have a high school, uh, student, um, that went on to K-State. And so he resigned his position on his, on this board. Um, wanted to get a high school student. And so I did a bit of a competition, asked the high schools to, uh, to ask students to apply for this. And we got a number of people who applied. And this one really stood out to me. We had some excellent students. I, I'm always impressed when I read the resumes and accomplishments of the, of these young people. But Rebecca Tang is one that, uh, she does have a 4.0, a grade point average. She works in a small business. She's bilingual. She knows Mandarin Chinese. She serves in band and debate. She is a volunteer at STEM camp. She's an organization called, she, uh, an organization called Invest in Girls. She's a volunteer there, does a number of things for them. She is, um, uh, obviously a very, a really talented young student and I would love to have her on this board. So I'm going to make the, uh, motion, Mr. Chairman, we would appoint Rebecca Tang to Citizens, Citizens Five Board.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other questions? Being done. I think that's a good appointment.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
She's not here.
Okay, she's not here. All right. Next item, please.
Item D, resolution nominating Scott Stiles for appointment to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Okay. Again, Mr. Wagner?
Yes, Chairman, uh, this, this item is a, for background, the Wichita Airport Advisory Board is a City of Wichita Advisory Board. Uh, they provide advice and recommendations to the Wichita City Council and City Manager on policy and strategic long-term issues with municipally owned and operated airports. Um, and within the city's ordinance on that, the Board of County Commissioners nominates for appointment five different people. So each of the county commissioners has one, uh, person that they can nominate for appointment. Uh, Mr. Stiles is Commissioner Howell's nomination for this. The resolution would nominate Mr. Scott Stiles for appointment to this. It would actually have to go to the City Council from there for, for final approval. Uh, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution in front of you on this.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, uh, say thank you to the, my previous appointment, his name was Dave Esslinger, who worked in aircraft his entire career. Um, he's been on this board as my appointment since the beginning of my time here as a commissioner. Uh, Dave served with honor. Unfortunately, he, uh, was, uh, I'll just say this, he passed away unfortunately, uh, about a month and a half ago. And, um, sorry, we will certainly miss him. He was a, a great dedicated person to this board and to this community. So we'll certainly be missing, uh, Mr. Dave Esslinger. But, uh, I've talked with, uh, Mr. Scott Stiles numerous times about different board opportunities. And this is one that just, he, he's always had an interest in this board. And, uh, his passion for this topic is, is interesting and noteworthy. So I, I wanted to appoint someone who no doubt would be eager to attend these meetings to, and to add a lot to the board content. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I am pleased to make a motion to nominate, actually nominate Scott Stiles to this, uh, Airport Advisory Board.
Okay. I'll second that. Just to comment that we all have a lot of board appointments. We've talked about this before and some boards are, uh, really important. And this one is very important. I actually, I, I always approve, uh, Commissioners, uh, nominations for various boards, but I always pay, the Airport Advisory Board is one that I kind of pay attention to make sure who is, who is it that person? Because it is a very, very, very important that serves not only Wichita and the Kansas City County, but the airport serves this whole state of Kansas and region. So thank you for that nomination. Uh, motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I don't see Scott here. He's, he's here often.
Most of the time he is, but he's not today.
Right. Okay. Scott, congratulations if you're watching. We'll get you sworn in. Next item, please.
New Business. Item E, adoption of the 2024 Legislative Platform.
Okay. Good morning, Tanya. Welcome. I see we have a red line in front of us.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Assistant County Manager, Tanya Cole. Uh, yes, you do have a red line version and then a clean version. Um, as mentioned at last, uh, at our last commission meeting, the Sedgwick County Legislative Platform is the foundation of a focused strategy and serves as a reference guide for legislative and policy positions and objectives. I'm back this week, uh, with the final draft version of the Legislative Platform. We focus our efforts on appropriations and policy issues of public service, public safety, fiscal responsibility, and workforce and economic development that are important to Sedgwick County to continue to maintain the high level of service and programs. Um, if you will recall, at the last meeting, we did have some work to do. Um, and so I reached out to Jessica and Jason, uh, with Watkins Public Strategy. And they, uh, reached out to Representative Owens and Carpenter on the Corrections and Community Development Disability, uh, Platform items. What they heard back was, uh, no changes or negative feedback on those items. Um, also Public Works, uh, did make some changes to their two items in a more condensed versions. And, uh, you will see that on the red line. So once this is adopted, our Legislative Platform is provided to all members of the Kansas Legislature, House, and Senate through, uh, Watkins Public Strategy. And Jason and Jessica will assist us with laying out these state issues intended for specific legislative action and working with the South Central delegation. Um, I'd like to just mention that we do have some events coming up. Tomorrow, uh, beginning at 4:00 PM is the South Central, uh, Legislative Delegation Annual Meeting at the WSU Innovation Campus Net App Building. Um, so that'll be an opportunity for, um, you all, um, to speak to the South Central, uh, Legislative Delegation on our platform issues. And then January 8th kicks off the 2024 Legislative Session. And then, uh, we will begin our weekly meetings with our lobbyists, Justin, Jason, and Jessica, uh, beginning the week of January 15th. So with that, um, I'd like to recommend that you adopt the 2024 Legislative Platform.
All right. Commissioners, we've been through this a handful of times. Thank you for the condensing. Thanks, Public Works, for downsizing your, uh, request, which makes a lot of sense, but, uh, we have to get it in simpleness. Um, the, I'll throw this out there real quick, but the, the, uh, order of, uh, is this just information on each one of these categories? Cause it, I think we've talked a little bit before, but with the order maybe not be maybe property tax statement and Public Works, which is, and then go into the com care, CDO corrections?
So.
I just don't know for sure.
Just, just as information, the way that I have this listed under appropriations and policy, it's really kind of in alpha order.
Okay.
By department. So if, if you want to move it around in more of a priority order, I'm happy to do so.
Well, just, uh, I don't know what the, I don't know what the card, the final, you know, palm card thing will look like. Uh, maybe that's what we can weigh in on. Maybe you'd provide a draft of the.
Sure.
Of the five and make it, uh, that's just my thought. I don't know. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, I, I'm just breezing through this, got a chance to really study it this morning. I just want to thank you for all the work you put into this, though.
Sure.
There was a lot of dialogue, a lot of conversation back and forth. And I know that, um, you with Watkins Group, it was, there was a lot of work that went into this. I want to thank you, your staff, those that participated in this. I also want to just publicly, uh, remind everyone that, you know, we have a job to contend for our constituents here locally. Um, our needs in Sedgwick County are different than, uh, in Johnson County or in Saline County or in Riley County. We have unique needs here and we've got to contend with our state delegation for serving our constituents here the best that we can. I'm grateful that we have a delegation, uh, that is active. Um, and I think it was demonstrated with the homelessness conversations and roundtables we had. Look, we've had multiple roundtable conversations. So, uh, we've got a good delegation that is very active and they very much are involved in the issues that are impacting this community. So this is just one part of the legislative partnership, uh, what we're putting together here. But this, this relationship is going to continue. We're going to continue to engage and continue to build relationships. So, uh, so I wanted to say that publicly, but I wanted to also publicly thank you for the work you put into this, too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. And Commissioner Dennis?
Uh, thank you. Very briefly, I want to thank Tanya and all the staff and everyone that have been working on this. I know it's been a long process. We've made numerous changes to it to make sure that it's as perfect as we can get it, to get our, uh, message across to our legislators that these are the things that we hold dear to our hearts here in Sedgwick County. These are the things that we want to work on. These are the things we worked with our, uh, lobbyists in Topeka. And, uh, thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
I kind of just want to echo what everyone has already said, but this is so much work that goes into this. And it's not like it takes, you know, a couple of weeks. This has been something that you guys have been working on for quite some time. So I appreciate the amount of work and, and detail that, um, you've put into this. And obviously want to thank Jessica and Jason as well, because I know they've been a big help in, in kind of forming this and, and putting it together in a way that's easiest for us to hopefully get some of these things accomplished. And, and we've been really lucky in the last couple of years and, and everything that we have accomplished with the state. And so I would, I'm hoping, but I would imagine that that would be, um, the same for this year, too. So just appreciate the work that you do on this. I know it's a lot. And, um, it just, it's noted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a, a much cleaner document. I really think we've done, um, a lot of great work to get this down to something more succinct and more, more focused and, and really more, there's a lot more action on this, the way it's worded. So this is a action document, which again, I like that better. Um, so really, uh, great job. The only thing I would, and in fact, I would say pretty much the entire document is really great. Um, just for clarification, on the, on the back page, and I'm just wondering on this statement, without, without a clarification, I'm wondering if, uh, if it's clear enough. It says on the top of the page, our ease property tax burden for Sedgwick County taxpayers through reductions to the state's 21.5 mil levy rate. I completely agree. And that's exactly where we need to go there. But on its own, it doesn't make sense. I think it should say, what it says currently, but I would add the words in lieu of the LAVTR and city-county revenue sharing funding. So it's clear we're tying those two together. Since they're not going to fund the LAVTR and C, and CCRS, um, if they're not going to fund those two, those two things, we would, uh, we would accept, we would, um, encourage, if you will, reduction in the 21, a reduction in the 21.5 mils. So if, again, if I was going to just make a suggestion, if it needs to be a motion or not. But again, sentence as it's currently worded, but rather than, after the word rate, I would remove that period. And I would say in lieu of LAVTR and CCRS funding, period.
All right. That's interesting suggestion. I don't know if we want to even bring that up or not, but I'm open, I'm open either way. Commissioner Beatty?
I'm open to that. I actually think it provides some necessary context. As we were, initially, the conversation in this community was about compelling them for LAVTR and the city sharing, uh, the city-county sharing. So I, I do think it adds some context and, um, just a simple addition of in lieu of LAVTR and, and city-county revenue sharing funding. Um, I, I do think it would make a lot of sense to do that. And I don't, I, I guess we can get the consensus from the rest of the Commissioners, but.
Sure.
I think that's something that we can add relatively quickly and move this thing forward.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I agree. Uh, if you remember, when I came back from, uh, the summer, uh, session with the KAC, that was one of the things that I brought back and brought, uh, to the attention of the Commissioners at the end of the meeting. And, uh, I know KAC is pressing for LAVTR and CCRS. Uh, I have talked to them a couple of times about that, uh, because what I believe is it's going to be, uh, dead on arrival and they're just going to eliminate, uh, LAVTR and CCRS, even though that is money that's owed back to Sedgwick County and all the counties. Uh, so what we need is, uh, some way that that money can still come back to Sedgwick County and yet, uh, benefit our citizens. And by saying that this is in lieu of LAVTR and CCRS, I think that it will keep this alive, uh, and let it move forward. Uh, I do believe that KAC is going to have a strong push to have LAVTR and CCRS, but I don't think, I think it's doomed to failure. But I don't think this is doomed to failure because it shows that the, the legislature can do the same thing we did. You saw in our video, we did reduce the mil levy. Uh, it shows that the legislature can also reduce the property tax burden on our citizens by giving the money back in, uh, property tax relief. So I, I, I strongly support this. When we first had it on our legislative agenda, Tanya remembers, is that we were supporting LAVTR and CCRS. And, uh, we talked about that and said that this is not going to be a winner. Uh, but we can show that, that the, uh, legislators that are in Topeka can come back and help our citizens. And this is what we're asking them to do. So I, I, I think it's probably a good addition just to add that, that little blurb at the end, in lieu of LAVTR and CCRS. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I, I want to know that Casey's doing a lot, um, pushing LAVTR and, and just like Commissioner Dennis said, like that's not probably going to go anywhere. This is a brave way that, oh, I actually turned it off instead of turning it on. Sorry. Um, this is a great way that we can still be supportive of the cause with KAC and the other counties, but also do it in a way that gives them another option since that's not, we don't think that's going to pass. So I think it's a great, just little addition that can, um, go back to the original intent of what we were doing here. So I appreciate that suggestion.
Okay. Seems like there's a consensus to do that. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the comments of Commissioners here, I would make a, a motion to add the words, after the word rate, the words, seven words here in, in series. It says in lieu of LAVTR and city, I should say, and CCRS funding, period.
Second. Okay. Motion in a second?
Just a comment.
Well, just make a motion.
That's my motion. I'm sorry, a second. I want to make a comment.
Want we make a motion to approve this as presented with the addition of that?
That's my motion. Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's been seconded by Ryan. Okay. Got that straight, clerks? Okay. Um, any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. You know, the reason that I think this, this is necessary, um, there is a, there's a distrust about how we might use funding that comes from those revenue funding programs. Uh, there is an argument that this money is not well-used in local government. And, uh, this is an election year for every representative, every Senator, all 165. And they have, the leadership on House and Senate have already both spoken in favor of this exact change. Uh, they're going to delete those out of statute, those, those other programs and refund, if you will, the same amount of money theoretically, um, back to local government through this reduction in 21.5 mils. I make one other point. Some calculations on my part, actually, we benefit. Um, if they would do this, they're, they're talking two mils reduction and then 21.5 mils. And again, this would hold schools harmless. They would fund this, the obligation to schools through, through, uh, um, income taxes and sales tax revenues rather than through property tax revenues as they do currently. And so this obligation shifts over to income and sales tax. So no one's, there's no recipient of funds that, that's going to lose on, on this idea. But, uh, our taxpayers in Sedgwick County will see theoretically a two mil reduction. That's actually more than we would able, be able to reduce. actually more than we would be able to reduce our mil levy if they funded these two programs to Sedgwick County Government, if we put all that money towards property tax relief, it's actually be a little bit less than two mils, so this is obviously, I think, where we need to go, I just want to make that comment, thank you Chairman.
Okay, thanks for that comment, alright, there's a motion and a second to approve with the added language, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks again Tanya and everybody for their input and the work on this, next item please.
Item F, reconsideration of item one of the minutes of the December 14th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, road improvements, Webb Road, between 79th and 87th Streets, South, R 367, Public Works.
Good morning Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas.
Thanks for being available this early in the morning.
Yeah, had to drink an extra cup of coffee to make sure I was alert, this item was originally part of the regular Board of Bids and Contracts meeting of December 14th, and it was deferred at our December 20th Commission Meeting, pending a CIP Amendment, and so therefore the approval of this item will be contingent on your approval of item H on the consent agenda today, with that being said, this recommendation that we're wanting to make is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $773,956.35, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, and we visited about this during Agenda Review, any questions or comments? No, okay, I'll make, it's in your district.
Yes sir, I'd make a motion, we would approve of the, approve of the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts with this revision of item one for the minutes of December 20th, 2023.
Alright, I'll second that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you Commissioners. Thanks again Joe for all the work, Madam Clerk, next item please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning Chairman and Commission, Tom Stoles County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items G through O this morning.
Okay, G through O, and as presented by Joe, it also includes item H, which complements this item, so I'll make a motion that we approve items G through O, motion and a second, any other questions, comments, I don't see any, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, and with that, we will recess the County Commission Meeting and call to order the governing body, or we'll take a break, I guess, from the Sedgwick County Commission Meeting, and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item please.
Public Agenda.
I don't think anybody signed up for Public Agenda on the Fire Agenda, so we will move to the next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, good morning again, Tom Stoles County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items A through B, I want to call out item A, this is a change in how we pay Division Chiefs, they are moving from exempt to hourly, Chief Nelson is here if there's any questions regarding that, and we had talked about this historically before the first of the year, what we were doing there, so that's on this particular consent item, so I ask that you approve both these items.
Okay, and I think that item A also had been fully vetted with the Fire Department Management, HR, and so I think it's a good solution, so thank you for explaining that, any other questions, comments, I don't see any, I'll make a motion to approve consent items A and B.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Alright, next item please.
Other.
I don't see anything under other, does anybody have anything under other, Fire isn't it, I don't see any, and next item.
Executive Session.
There's no executive session, so we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, and will return to the Board of Sedgwick County Commission Meeting, next item please.
Committee Reports.
Committee Reports, Commissioners, do we have anything to report under committees? I will only, my only report will be that we are starting a new year, and I think next week we will be having a discussion about the chairmanship and going forward, and with that becomes committee assignments, and so there'll be, could be some realignment of our committees going forward for 2024, so other than that, I don't see anything else in the committee reports, next item please.
Other.
Does anybody have anything under other to report, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, one of the great things that we do is try and recognize our employees, and one of the ways we do that is through the Excellence in Public Service Award that we have each year, and we've had a number of great people nominated, the way that they're really recognized is they get a check for $2,500 from the Devoire Foundation, and I just want to express our deep condolence to the family of Bill Devoire, he passed away on December the 19th at the age of 87, he attended all of our meetings, most of the time when he was able, he actually attended the awards ceremony where the individual was surprised at work, and as one of the recipients way back when I was a teacher of that award, I appreciated it very much, and I attend every time to recognize our folks, because it's a great way to recognize our folks, but it was extremely kind and generous of the Devoire family, and both he and his brother used to attend, his brother passed away several years ago, and Bill just passed away, so I want to express my deep condolence to the Devoire family, thank them very much for continuing to support the Excellence in Public Service Program, and again, thank you and condolences, thank you.
Commissioner, thanks for pointing that out, because you're right, the Devoire family's been great, I can't say anything added to it other than our condolences to his family, his sons, and his wife, and Bill was a good, good, good man, anything else under other? Okay, my only comment under other is that thank you to our, speaking of our employees, thanks to all of our special employees that worked Christmas holiday weekend, 911, EMS, Fire, I know I'm forgetting some, our Sheriff's Department, all of you that work and sacrificed away from your family on Christmas weekend and New Year's, New Year's weekend, and I think New Year's Eve was rather calm for the most part in our community, so anyway, just my, our thanks for us, for representing and supporting our community and keeping everybody safe, and so, anything else, I don't see anything, next item.
Executive Session.
We do not have executive session, so is there any other business that needs to come before the Commission on today, January 3rd, my daughter's birthday by the way, but I don't see any, so with that, thank you for being here everybody, we will be adjourned.